Well, the hour being three o'clock, we'll call this regular council meeting of town council to order this twenty-sixth day of April two thousand twenty-one. We have an agenda before us. Are there any additions or additions? No? If not, could we have a motion to pass or approve?
Your worship, I so move the motion or so move the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Councilor Hill. All in favor of the motion carried. First on the agenda are the regular council meeting minutes of April twelfth for consideration. Would someone like to move, adopt those?
I'll move those minutes, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Bates. Any errors or omissions to be noted or discussed? If not, all in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. The next is the, are the minutes of the agenda and priorities meeting of April sixteenth for consideration. Would someone like to move or adopt?
I'll move, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Barclay. Any errors or omissions? Not all in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. All right, first on the agenda is a public hearing. I would so declare the public hearing for bylaw fourteen seventy-eight seventy-one be open. Just in order of clarification on the order of business, while administration will present the amendment and then we'll hear anybody that's in support of the bylaw and then anyone who's opposed to the bylaw. And then we will pass on then to questions from council. So.
All right, so land use bylaw amendment fourteen seventy A seventy-one is a series of text amendments to the residential multifamily R three district specific to forty-six twenty-fiftieth Avenue being the current site of or the previous site of the associate medical clinic. The amendment proposes to add as discretionary uses financial services, health services, mixed-use development offices, personal services, and retail stores specific to this site only. So again, this is a bylaw that has been applied for by the current owner of the property with the intent to provide more flexibility for the redevelopment of this site, specifically the reuse of that building. So this public hearing was made available on the town's website in the Alberton and direct mail was sent to all adjacent property owners notifying them of the proposed bylaw and the scheduled public hearing. To date, I haven't had any written or phone inquiries subject to this bylaw. So I'm not anticipating anyone to join us, but that's.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins. Are there anyone, is there anyone in attendance to support this bylaw? And of course, if we're on the internet, if there's anyone out there that's you have one? Please raise your hand on the, on the Zoom, on the internet if you wish to speak. No? Okay, well, if there's no one there just to speak for or against. Pardon me? That's what I'm saying now. It doesn't appear to be anybody in favor, in support of the the amendment, so I would accept anyone that's got anything to bring up, opposed to this amendment. No? Okay. Any questions of council? I think it's basically just clarifying some potential development, not a rezoning or anything, so.
Yeah, so it leaves the R three zoning intact, so but does provide a bit more flexibility for the use, especially if they're going to reuse the existing building. As our council members that are on MPC know, we did approve a childcare facility for that site. And I believe that they're in the process of obtaining building permits for that use for the main floor or the upper floor, I guess. Right now, the pharmacy is continuing to operate in the basement, but this, even this amendment could provide some flexibility for the use of that basement space. The proposed uses are all quite consistent with what traffic and parking generation would be for what the clinic was like when they were there. But again, leaves some flexibility that when that building reaches the end of life, it could be redeveloped as a as a multifamily residential site.
Okay, well, if there's no further questions from council, I would suggest we entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
I'd so move, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison. All in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have a delegation in regards to the auditors.
At three thirty, your worship.
Okay, all right, so hold that off. Move on to council administration. CEO's report.
Thank you, your worship. Just to be brief, it's there for your review and any questions associated with this report or anything else regarding the operations administration. Do want to highlight the one engagement we had last week on April twenty-second. There's a coordination of the elected official candidate workshop, which was attended quite well. Approximately twenty participants registered for that event. Just, just basically provides those that have some interest in running for elected municipal position, just kind of give them understanding what's, what that may look like. So I think it was a good evening and, and yeah, there's some, there's some good participation there, so let's leave it there, your worship.
Okay. Any questions of the CEO? No? And is someone willing to make a motion?
I'll move, we accept this report for information.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Great, thank you. And again, the CEO is report on ACC.
So thanks, your worship, just regarding emergency coordination center, we continue to meet weekly. Just a few items from, from the government on their weekly publication for municipalities. Just confirming council meetings are maintaining that this current function is still appropriate. Regarding municipal election, there's been no adjustments, so the government is still anticipating in-person voting and no changes in the special ballot provisions are planned at this time. Just regarding recreation facilities, splash parks, outdoor pools and other outdoor facilities can operate within the realm of step one restrictions, which means outdoor fitness and recreation facilities may be used as long as they align with public health guidelines with physical distancing of two meters between households or individuals is required with maximum of ten. To confirm that most municipal golf courses can be open. Indoor recreation facilities also can be open. Indoor rec facilities are permitted to be open, however, indoor recreational spaces may only be used for individual or household. One-on-one fitness training, indoor group fitness or adults. Indoor group fitness for adults is not permitted. Youth lessons, practices, and physical conditioning activities are allowed for indoor and minor sports activities. Campgrounds, yes, campgrounds can be opened with shared amenities. High-touch areas to be cleaned on frequently. Also, community halls can be open for activities such as wedding ceremonies up to ten people, funeral services up to twenty people. Receptions and trade shows are not permitted at this time. That'll team sports, I mentioned already, there's, they're not permitted and not until step three. Just to confirm, as of today, there's South Redder County, including S V R sixty-four reported cases. There's also an effort put in on by economic development communications in contact with businesses with promoting interest for patios. So there was some chats with different establishments on, on those concepts and ideas. And again, if there's any questions, council.
CEO Becker, is there, do they give you any information? We don't seem to see it out in the public on any tracking in the source of these flare up. Are you getting any information at that level?
Nothing that's outside of media. We get the occasional media where the source is, but when there's no break, but for us in our area, we don't get that information.
Yeah, it doesn't surprise me. I think people are starting just the latter stages of dropping their guard and pushing the limits, catching them. But I guess the vaccine program is going well, so that's I guess our only line of defense right now. Social distancing. Anyways, any questions of this ACC report? Would someone like to move, we accept it for information?
I'll move that we accept that for information, your worship.
All in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. Six point three, council action control. Any discussion in that report? No questions for that report? Would someone like to move, we accept it for information?
I will move, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Barclay. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next is an RFD regarding the request to remove two-hour parking restrictions. Manager, please.
Yeah, so the purpose, council on March eighth received a request from the owners of Darkwoods and Napa to review the current two-hour parking restrictions in front of their business. The recommended motion is to remove the two-hour restriction located on the North Feeder Road of Fiftieth Street and carry out a further survey in the second quarter of two thousand twenty-two to assess the impact of the business on to any of the businesses. The background is council package of March eighth contained a letter submitted by the owners of Darkwood and Napa requesting the removal of the current two-hour parking restrictions in front of their business. Protective Services met with the four businesses who have potentially or would be potentially affected by the change to the current parking zone, Darkwoods Brewing, Coffee and Roasting, DNR Drive-Thru, Napa Auto Parts, and Ace Liquor Store. As a result of that survey, two of the businesses, obviously Napa and Darkwoods see a positive in the removal of that two-hour parking. Ace Liquor had no issues in the removal and didn't see any detriment to the removal of it. And DNR would like it to stay. They have concerns with the business owner and the parking of the staff and patrons along for long periods of time in front of their establishment. And they see this as a detriment to their patrons. And they would like to see it stay. Summary there of the comments with regard to, you know, Napa would like to see it removed. It's been a decade-old policy put into place because of the mad butcher, which is no longer there. The owner doesn't understand why the same street to the east is exempt from the two-hour parking restrictions and concern that the two-hour parking is promoting patrons to leave after alcohol is consumed. If the alcohol is consumed next door, we're excessive, the vehicles would stay overnight and be in violation of the parking bylaw. They have no concerns with the removal. So again, the recommendation is that we remove the two-hour parking restrictions in front of DNR, Napa, and Darkwoods and review it again in two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
Yes, your worship, I would move the recommended motion.
Okay. Discussion. Councilor Hill.
Yes, your worship, I guess the only concern with the DNR drive-in is, I know they have been open now trying to be more, not just seasonal, but they do have quite a bit of parking adjacent to them to the, to the west, as well as typically a lot of people, it's a drive-through. So I can understand that they would like it to stay as is, maybe don't like to change, but I think the bigger benefit would be to the other businesses on that corridor, so I would be supporting this.
Okay. Councilor Bates?
I believe I would support it. I'm just wondering if, if we might want to consider checking the status a little earlier than a year from now. That would be my only comment.
Okay.
Through to Chief Lee, I do support it as well, but I'm also wondering, is it possible to leave a two-hour section kind of in front of the DNR to accommodate? I know they mentioned in their letter, I believe sometimes they may get an RV or something coming in that's not going to go through the drive-thru, so parks and walks up to the window? Or is that not possible along there?
Your worship, through to Councilor Barclay, it's such a small section. And to eliminate it, the intent would really for ourselves to be consistent across that feeder road where there's no restrictions currently in place.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Reberger.
Just a comment, it seems counterintuitive to me to not want to have it, but if the majority of the businesses want it, I guess then I would be in favor of it.
Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, your worship. I also support the bylaw. I do have one question, though. It is around when a business opens, aren't they supposed to have so much parking for staff? Like, aren't they? And was that carried out when we did the development permit? Or the business license or however that works?
So that, that area is actually located within the, the central business district in our land use bylaw, and there aren't onsite parking requirements for, for downtown businesses. So there is a dividing line between Napa and then when you get to home hardware, it changes into our highway commercial district where there is onsite parking requirements for those businesses.
Okay, thank you very much. So I still support the recommended motion.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Carried. Okay. Next is an RFD regarding bylaw sixteen seventy-one to amend the emergency management bylaw.
So the purpose is to amend the Town of Innisfail Emergency Management Bylaw as recommended by the Community Emergency Management Program Review, which was carried out last year, and the March fourth resolution of the Emergency Advisory Committee. The recommended motion is that council give first, second, and third reading of amending bylaw sixteen seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one to amend section five A of the emergency management bylaw. The background to this is that local authority emergency management regulations came into force in January of two thousand twenty. The regulations require that the Emergency Management Agency to complete an annual audit of our emergency management program. As a result of the audit in the fall of two thousand twenty, received recommend, make recommendations to amend section five A of our emergency management bylaw to include the number of council members and the assigned chair that make up our emergency advisory committee. This was discussed at the Emergency Advisory Committee on March fourth and where the committee agreed by resolution to make the recommended amendments.
Okay. Is someone prepared to move that we give first reading for this bylaw?
I'll make the motion that we give, give first reading to bylaw sixteen seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one as presented.
Thank you. Discussion. I think it's pretty straightforward what the intent is. I haven't heard any negative feedback from it. All in favor of the motion carried. Someone prepared to give the second reading?
I move that we give second reading to bylaw sixteen seventy-one, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor of the motion carried. Thank you. Is someone, then again, prepared to make a motion that we proceed to third and final reading for this bylaw?
I will make that motion, your worship.
Thank you, Councilor Barclay. All in favor? Carried. With that done, is someone prepared to make a motion that we give this third reading?
Also move that we give it third reading?
Thank you. No discussion. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, worship, council.
Next is an RFD regarding election sign bylaw.
I think our delegation is here, your worship.
Do you want to do that?
Except the council, we can continue on?
We can, yeah, I'm willing if everyone else is, if the we have the delegation from BDO, our auditors. Touch that button, sir. There you go.
Testing? There we go. All right, so once again, I got my sidekick out and let's see, who's the partner on the file? So basically, I'm just going to be running you guys through the financial statements this year, going through the auto report and doing comparatives for you guys. And if at any point you guys have any questions, please feel free to stop me. That being said, I'm just going to continue going forward. Do you guys have the financial statements all in front of you, I hope?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so I'm going to start with the independent auditors report here. So we have audited the financial statements for the town of Innisfail. We are issuing a clean audit report. It's the same opinion that we give every single year for you guys. The basis for our opinion, the audit is done in accordance to Canadian generally accepted auditing standards, and we are in fact independents of the town of Innisfail. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these consolidated financial statements in accordance with public sector accounting standards. Our responsibility to these financial statements, our objective is to obtain reasonable assurance about whether these financial statements as a whole are free from material misstatement. And so in doing so, how we help do that is by identifying and assessing the risks of material misstatement of the consolidated financial statements. Obtain audit evidence that is sufficient, appropriate to provide a basis for our opinion to obtain an understanding of internal controls that are relevant to the audit. Evaluate the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of accounting estimates and related disclosures used by management. And we will conclude on the appropriateness of management's use of the going concern basis of accounting. And overall, we will evaluate the presentation, structure, and content of the consolidated financial statements. We will obtain sufficient, appropriate audit evidence regarding the financial information of the entities or business activities within the group, which is the town of Innisfail. So to reiterate, it's a clean audit opinion, no significant findings noted. If you guys want to move to page three, which is the consolidated statement of financial position, I'll quickly run down and give you guys kind of a comparative to where you are this year in comparison to where you were at this point last year. So starting with the financial assets, I'll go through this in more detail once I get to the statement of cash flow. But essentially, your, your cash is up about six point five million dollars from last year. A good chunk of that is coming from your maturity and your short-term investment is just being moved over. Your accounts receivable looks up about one point four million dollars. A good chunk of that is because of your MSP grant that you received in the year. That's just the, one of the government grants that they provided for COVID-related stuff. Moving further down to your liabilities, everything's pretty much the same as last year, except deferred revenue, which is going to be slightly up in the year. And that's just due to the deferral of the MSP stuff that you had received in two thousand twenty. Overall, your accumulated surplus is increased by one point five million dollars, meaning that your financial position has increased by about one point five million dollars. Moving to the next page, which is the consolidated statement of operation. So the thing you want to look at here is your two thousand twenty budget, and you kind of want to compare it to where your actuals are in the two thousand twenty column, which is the middle. So in aggregate, you can see your total revenue for the year that you had got, you guys had budgeted was eighteen point eight million dollars. Your actual was about eighteen point five. There's a slight shortfall that can be attributed partly due to user fee revenue, closing of pools and stuff like that, which will drop down some of your revenue. Overall, though, you guys are pretty, pretty close to what you had budgeted in the year. Moving further down to your expenditures, same thing, you budgeted twenty point eight million dollars in expenses. Your actual expenses were slightly lower at twenty point six nine. Overall, the numbers are very consistent with where they were in two thousand nineteen as well. And your overall excessive revenue over expenditures, after all your grants and user fee revenue and expenses you incurred in the year, you are up about one point six million dollars in the year, which is pretty much your change in your accumulated surplus. Any questions on that at all?
I do have the one question on the grant to the COVID offset expenses in the COVID. It was nine hundred and some thousand total. And yet, we hadn't used it all yet in, in two thousand twenty. We had a portion of it left in a, in a period of time to do that in four months in the spring. But you've shown all of the revenue, a hundred percent of the revenue, the portion of it, accounts receivable, but.
Yeah, yeah. So typically, the way, so there's two COVID-related grants. The one is the, the MSI grant and the MSP. So the MSP grant is the one for about eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars. So that grant relates to projects related to two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. So we did recognize the receivable portion of that, meaning that you guys are going to receive this money. But it's not recognized as revenue for the two thousand twenty-one projects, so that's why it's sitting in deferred. Because technically, it's a liability right now because you haven't incurred that actual expense to offset it. So. Yeah, if you go up one page. Yeah, so your deferred revenue line, you can see last year was eight hundred thousand dollars. And this year, it's two point four. So a good chunk of that is going to be your two thousand twenty-one MSP that we haven't recognized yet for the two thousand twenty-one period. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
It does, but I what I'm, I don't. I had it pictured in my mind that it was it was we're showing all of the revenue for two thousand and twenty, but not all of the expenses in relation to that.
No, so we recognize the two thousand and twenty expenses in correlation to.
Yeah.
The two thousand and twenty amounts that we've recognized.
I would consider the. The excess portion that we haven't used in two thousand and twenty would be a liability to.
Exactly.
Offset in the spring, the expenses in this four month.
Yep, hundred percent.
Yeah, okay. As long as I understand.
Does that help?
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yep, no worries. Gonna move to the consolidated statement of change in net financial assets. So we're gonna take your statement of operations excessive revenue over expenditures, which is the one point six million dollars. And then we're gonna add your capital asset additions and then your amortization in the year. And then your your net loss on your sale of tangible capital assets in the year. And your change in prepaid of about two hundred thousand dollars. So your net change in net financial assets is about five hundred thousand dollars. So it's just a movement of taking your revenue and then your changes in your capital assets and prepaid. Which makes up your net change in your financial assets at the end of the year. So your your total change from the beginning to the end is gonna be about the five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The next page, we can go through the statement of cash flow and this will basically outline kind of where the cash has gone in two thousand and twenty. So. First of all, if there was a change in assets on the balance sheet from current year to prior year, that basically means you're. Like if your assets are going up from current year to prior year, it means your saving the cash flow is gonna decrease in that value. Where your liabilities are the other way around, where if your liabilities are going up, like if your accounts payable goes up from last year. Then your your cash flow is gonna go up as well because it just means they have more, you haven't paid for those expenses in the year. So the starting line for a statement of cash flows here is gonna come from your statement of operations, which is your excessive revenue over expenditures of one point six million dollars. And then we have to add back the non cash items that are showing up in your statement of operations, which is your amortization and your net loss of TCA. And then we take in the changes in your net non cash operating balances. So these are gonna be your changes in assets from current year to prior year. So your taxes receivables, ninety thousand dollars, your big one here is your increase in accounts receivable, one point four million dollars. Good portion of that is attributed to the MSP. And then another big change here, we're gonna see your accounts payable and accrued liabilities went up, which means. Your your liability went up about six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from last year. And then we get down to your deferred revenue, which is making up a change of about one point six million dollars. So again, that's gonna be related to your MSP and additional deferred revenue amounts as well. And then the amount of capital assets that you guys had bought in the year is about five point four million dollars. And then there's gonna be your change in investments, which is just your investments that were maturing in the year that you had received and moved over to your. Bank accounts. And then there's just a repayment of long term debt of a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on any of that? Okay, isn't making this easy for me? Okay, I'm gonna go to page ten. I'm gonna start with note one, which is your cash and cash equivalents. So at the end of the year. As at December thirty first, two thousand and twenty, your current cash is sitting at fourteen point seven million dollars. Of that balance, you currently have restricted cash in relation to your MSI and building Canada grants. Your federal gas tax and other amounts of about one point five million dollars. So that fourteen point seven, you have about one point five of it restricted for use. Moving down, this is just to quickly highlight the difference in your investments and the maturities in the year, dropping it from seven point six to two point six. Then gonna move you to the deferred revenue schedule here. So that's gonna be note six. So your opening balance and deferred revenue is about eight hundred thousand dollars as at the end of two thousand and nineteen. And throughout two thousand and twenty, you guys had received contributions of about seven million dollars. Of which you had spent about five point three million dollars, leaving you with an ending balance of about two point four million dollars in deferred revenue. So your deferred revenue is gonna be a mix of your grants and additional deposit liabilities or anything of that sort. Okay. Gonna ask you guys to please go to page fifteen and then I'll kind of run you through your accumulated surplus. So starting from the top here, your equity in TCA is about ninety one million dollars. That's. The book value of your capital assets as at your end. And then you have your unrestricted surplus of about three point nine million dollars. And then as we kind of move down our restricted reserves here, your total restricted reserves is currently seventeen point three million dollars. So the aggregate of your equity in capital assets, your unrestricted surplus and your your restricted amounts. That's gonna equal your total accumulated surplus of about a hundred and twelve million dollars. If you guys could go to the next page, I can talk about it a little bit more here. So here's kind of the changes in your unrestricted, you're restricted in your equity in TCA. Just gonna kind of focus on the restricted surplus column here for about seventeen point three million dollars. So you have restricted amounts of about seventeen point three million dollars, but if you look at your balance sheet, you have about fourteen point seven million dollars in cash. You have about two point six million dollars in investments and you have about three point six million dollars in accounts receivable. And you have about four point six million dollars in land held for resale. So of your current assets, you have about twenty five point five million dollars sitting on your balance sheet with restricted amounts of seventeen point three. So basically show goes to show you guys, you guys are sitting in a good financial position as at your end. So. Any questions on that? Okay, if you guys can go to the next page, we'll quickly talk about the debt limits here. So debt limits are derived out of a calculation using your statement of operations. Basically, it's taking your operating revenue for the year. And multiplying it by one point five, and that's gonna get your total debt debt limit, which is. The MGA's guidance or recommendation of how much debt you should have on hand a as a ceiling. And then next in line, there's the debt servicing limit. So that's kind of the amount of that that you should be able to service in the year. As a maximum again, and that is also taken as a statement of operations calculation, basically taking. Your operating revenue again and multiplying it by twenty five percent. So. Yeah, your debt limit is remaining around twenty seven point three million dollars for the year. And it will change every year depending on what your revenue is. And then I'm just gonna move you guys to note seventeen. It's expense by object, so it's gonna be a couple pages down. So this is just another way of you looking at what your total expenses were based off of your statement of operations. Just a different way to look at it in case you were curious of what the individual breakdown was by department. So once again, you should probably be focusing on the budget for two thousand and twenty and compare it to where you are in the actual two thousand and twenty year. And then you should also kind of see where you guys were at the year before. So ultimately speaking, your your budgeted expenses was twenty point eight million dollars, your actual is about twenty point six, twenty point seven. So you guys are pretty close to what you had budgeted in the year. There's no real glaring or significant changes that are out of the ordinary. Okay, and then the last thing that I kind of wanted to talk about with you guys was just our budget note. That's gonna be our note twenty. So this is this budget note is just a reconciliation of where you guys budgeted in the year and kind of. How we get to the amount on our statement of operations. And so the operating budget was set out at ninety eight thousand dollars. We add back our principal payments on debt of a hundred point nine, and then we take our net operating transfers to reserve and capital of about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Then we subtract our amortization expense and then our budgeted excess of revenue over expenditures is three million dollars. And then we take our capital expenditures in the year of about four point five. And then we subtract the budgeted transfer from reserves of about one, one million dollars. And then we get to a budgeted combined excess of revenue over expenditure of about one point six million dollars. And you can tie that one point six million dollars to your statement of operations and that'll get you from your budgeted amounts. That's all I got. You guys have any questions at all?
Questions, it's a pretty good report. I don't know what else to say, Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, your worship, through to the delegation. Just a question around reserves.
Sure.
We can go back to that slide where all the reserves are there. And the question that I have is, is there. Any sort of guideline as to how many reserves you should have or, you know?
Well, you should always make sure, like if you ever have money that you make in the year. And council wants to decide to use that money for future projects, then. How do I phrase this correctly? Do you wanna step in on this one?
Like the quick answer, no, there's no. The idea behind the reserves is is council taking the extra money that they collected, put it aside for future projects. So really, what you wanna look at is that our most reserves funded through cash and or investments essentially. So it's just a matter of tracking that and going forward, making sure to fund it as you go. There's no real benchmark necessarily, it's just whatever is happening.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Beach.
Yeah, just a comment, when as we look at reserves, we we budget for reserves too. We don't just take excess, right? That is key parts of the budget lots of times too, right?
Yep.
It seems like this transition to tangible assets and such has created a. Now all of a sudden, you know, putting. Tangible or lack of another word, dementia or, I'm sorry. Depreciation, but. It seems like it kind of came in hand in hand with allocation of reserves. As to tangible assets and.
Yeah.
And replacement values and.
If you scroll up a little bit on that schedule, that's that's the essence of this. You'll see things like. This really shows where it's going in actual fact.
Yes.
You know, the operations itself is two point eight. That's that's really what the operating surplus is for the town.
Yep.
So it's that's that's the breakdown. And I need, I need, you're alluding to ninety million dollars just relating to those capital items.
Okay, any other questions? Well, I thank you for that report. No. Highlights or anything to come of it, which is good news and and we appreciate your your input.
I would also like to take the time to, well, thank you guys first of all for allowing us to be here. And second of all, for the help with Erica and Todd and helping with the two thousand and twenty year end. As always, to kind of make the year quite a bit easier. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for your report. I guess at this point, do we want to? Someone like to move that we accept this report for information?
I just, oh, yeah, no, if probably more specific, specific, your worship, as per the recommended motion. I think we need this on our books to, the council give first second.
Oh, do we?
We're on the wrong report. The council approves the two thousand and twenty audited financial statement, sorry.
You need three readings?
No, I got ahead of myself. When do we get three readings to audit the financial statement? Sorry, sorry Vanessa, no, for council to approve the two thousand and twenty audited financial statements.
Okay, thank you. Is someone prepared to make that motion?
Your worship, I would make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Hill.
Not first, second or third reading?
Everybody understands the motion. Thank you. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
And then also, your worship, council approves the two thousand and twenty Alberta. Financial information return.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion?
I guess so, move.
Yeah, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
And thank you guys for your for your continued support as well.
Yeah, of course. Thanks so much for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, if we want to move on to that. RFD regarding election sign by law sixteen sixty nine.
That's me, your worship. I just want to thank Vanessa for her research on this. This draft by law. So the election sign by law came about at the March twenty second council meeting. Where council give direction to administration to draft an election sign by law. What we're looking for today, council is your consideration to 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 either. Adopt this by law or amend this by law or accept the report as information or anything else that you would find appropriate within your deliberations. Administration has drafted a bylaw for council consideration and councils in the position to accept the report as I, as I mentioned. The bylaw as presented allows for election signs replaced on both public and private lands. No earlier than forty five days prior to municipal general election. Maximum sign dimensions and the ability to enforcement to write violation tickets as required. The draft by law also outlines the sign locations in which is the same as the current election sign policy. It is also noted that the forty five day prior to election comes from the current policy. And obviously, council can either lengthen that term or shorten it based on on your desire. So if you wish, I could walk you through the by law to highlight. Pertinent areas for your consideration, or unless you've had had that time to review this by law in more detail, but certainly up to your direction. Council.
You wanna go through on the highlight, just on the highlights, I mean, it's follows most of our policy that we had, but.
Just quickly, then your worship, just the purpose of the by law, once again. Is to encourage the effective use of election signs as a means of communication and manner. And ensure safety and aesthetics and that will be equitably applied and enforced. This by law applies to elections administered by the town of Innisfail. Under the local authorities election act, the school board elections under the education act. And any election administered by elections Alberta and elections Canada within the town of Innisfail. So we do have through your authority through this by law of ability to regulate signage for all those types of the elections. As well, of course, by elections. Yeah, it's it's, I was training by law, there's there's court definitions. The election sign installation direction guidelines on public lands. So again, the what was pulled from the policy was the location, maybe Vanessa, if you could go to that, the map. Of where the signs will be located or can be located. So this is on public lens, of course, the bylaws outlines how signs can be placed on private property as well. But these are the respective areas on signage location. Again, this is exactly the same as the as the current policy. Administration suggestion in follow suit of the current policy is again the forty five days prior to municipal election, which runs into around that September third. Date, twelve oh one AM, September third. The, those candidates can start putting their signs up until till the election is over. What's different between the policy and this by law is the actual sign size. So there was a maximum sign of four feet by four by eights within the policy. where this calls, with this bylaw in the case restricted to four by four. What's also different from a policy and a bylaw is the policy, it's a, it's a suggestion, it's a guideline, whereas a bylaw is enforceable. Within this bylaw section into 23 on, there's references on how enforcement can be applied. Enforcement can be applied by, again, enforcement, which means town enforcements, through our CPO, but also if there's infringement on areas with Innisville operations departments, those respective employees can also remove those, those signs that are in breach of this bylaw.
Careful, clarification on the private property election signs under that number 14. Private property is only 45 days in advance?
Yes, all signs, Your Worship, whether it's on public or private lands, it's 45 days prior. So yeah, it's, it's the same.
Whereas we didn't have any, any policy on private property before, did we?
Yeah, we did, which is a, the policy is attached, like there was a reference to there was reference to both public and private lands.
Slipped. So if this bylaw is passed, these signs that are up before 45 days, it has to be removed?
That's correct, Your Worship.
Any other questions or the Counselor Reberger?
Not a question, I just we're mixing our apples and oranges or metaphors or something in here, most of it is in metric, but line six says sign, election signs under public should be four feet by four feet in size and under number 11 on private property is 1.2 meters by 1.2 meters, which is also four feet by four feet, so I think we should change the language on that line because all the site triangles and everything else is in metric and spacing of the signs. So I think that should be changed to the metric equivalents.
And that's only more of a clarification than a change.
Yeah, it's just a clarification that we should, before we make a motion on it, we should change that
Probably.
language.
Your Worship through to CEO Becker, with respect to the 20 meter distance, the corner at, the southwest corner at Tulley and 50th Street. If we have 15 candidates as an example, and we have to have 20 meter distance, is that space able to accommodate?
Your Worship, to Councilor Barclay, what I read into the bylaw and, and previous, and kind of policy, it's 20 meters of the same sign the same candidate, so we can confirm that, that it's a clause, so you could, you know, I could put a sign beside Vanessa's sign, doesn't have to be 20 meters apart, but I can't put two of the same sign.
Exactly, sorry, I thought it meant 20 meters between you and Vanessa, okay.
Your Worship, just to pose, pose a question and by all means, it might not be might not be an issue for some, but last election, there was a lot of, there were some questions I had received about if it was really appropriate to, to kind of clutter up in front of our cemetery as that, for that location. Some viewed it as potentially disrespectful for the cemetery or, or and it was just a, just a statement, maybe just food for thought, um, you know, could we do without that area? You know, that's kind of a, a no-go zone, but if, if it's not council's desire, then that's fine, but I just thought I'd bring that up because that was brought up to a couple different, by a couple different long-term residents of Innisville. So it's just a discussion item.
So I think we've got some corrections that we want to get done, do we want to hold this off till next council? No? And do you want to go through and clarify where those changes are?
No.
Counselor Harrison?
Now, thank you, Your Worship, just for clarification, in the schedule of enforcement in the back there, the fine is a maximum of $10,000 and a year in jail. I think it might be a little excessive if we put a sign up, maybe there's a couple zeros in there that are.
Your Worship.
Where is that?
The man here, but it's a minimum of a hundred dollars, so it's really based on court, it's could escalate. I'm not sure what reason or why would come about to, to have that level of, of fine. But it's really a, it's applied through a court, it could be a maximum of $10,000, but really focuses, it's a minimum of a, a hundred dollars. So I'm not sure, Gary, if there's anything for clarity, but it's really applicable to, to the course on, on the application of that level of fines.
Thank you, well, that'll certainly deter putting signs up before the 45 days, maximum of $10,000, so no, thank you very much.
Counselor Reberger?
Just a comment on the, the signs in front of the cemetery, I would view that as there's probably a lot of veterans in there that would be happy to have election signs up, so to me, that would be a non-issue.
Okay, do you want to, do we have, we got the clarification on the measurements and such that we can proceed? Got that under control? All right, well, is someone prepared to make a motion and then we give this first reading?
I would so move that we give first reading to election sign bylaw 1669-2021.
Okay. Discussion. We've had some already about any other locations that are of concern, I haven't heard of any others that have been too bad, but I think the last by-election, they got stretched out a little bit. But anyways. No discussion, all in favor of the motion, carried. Someone prepared to give this second reading?
That's the move of Your Worship, that we give second reading to election sign bylaw 1669-2021.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison, discussion. All in favor of the motion, carried. Would someone make, give this, or make the motion to give this third reading?
Your Worship, I'll, I'll move that we move to third reading.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, carried? And someone willing to make certain final?
Your Worship, I would give their final reading to bylaw 1669-2021.
Okay, thank you, all in favor of the motion, carried, thank you. All right. We have an FCS funding.
So counsel, so Your Worship, also with that report is to rescind or repeal the election sign policy 20, sorry, I think the actual date of that is, I thought is approved in 2017, wasn't it? Okay, sorry, so asking council to repeal election sign policy 2004-04, through a resolution, please.
Okay, does everybody understand that? Okay, is someone prepared to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, Your Worship, that we repeal election sign policy 2004-04.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Barclay. Any discussion? No, all in favor of the motion, carried unanimously, thank you. We did this to you last time, Karen. Got you all ready and whoa. Anyways, floor is yours.
All right, thank you, Your Worship, so I'm here today to request a decision regarding the recommendation of the SCS, FCSS Advisory Board to fund the Youth Empowerment and Support Program. An application was received by the YES program on March 26th requesting FCSS funding for 2021. The advisory board met on Tuesday, April 13th to discuss recommendations for the distribution of the remaining funds. Some contingency funding was withheld in December to allow for the ongoing identification of gaps in trends in services and was allocated for distribution in 2021 in response to identified community needs. So the outcomes is programs and services continue to be provided, which supports the well-being of children, families, caregivers, older adults and seniors in Innisville. Service level impacts to FCSS is minimal, it's more around just creating the funding agreement and administering that as a part of our day-to-day administration. The FCSS Advisory Board is recommending the following distribution of the 2021 FCSS grant funding to the Youth Empowerment and Support Program to the amount of $20,000. The proposed recommendations align with the town strategic plan in promoting the well-being of residents and access to social amenities in Innisville. The applicants will be contacted directly via a letter or email to inform them of a decision regarding their application and the public will be informed via a press release. So the recommended motion is that council approve FCSS 2021 funding as follows to the Youth Empowerment and Support Program in the amount of $20,000 for 2021.
Okay. Someone prepared to make a motion to that effect?
Well, I'm on the committee, but I will make that motion as, as presented.
Thank you, Counselor Bates, discussion.
Your Worship through to Karen, can you give us a brief background of the, the program?
So the YES program is in a number of, it's already in Chinook's Edge School Division, it's in different schools, Bowden, Didsbury, Elnora, those, those schools, they were supposed to come to Innisville last at the beginning of this school year, but funding, again, funding changes at the last minute actually caused them to withdraw from that. So they're looking to partner, so one of the ways that they're different from the family school wellness, family school wellness has seen a significant shift in their service levels due to a decrease in funding, you may remember that the family resource networks, they did not receive that funding. So the family school wellness program is actually adjusted from a 12-month program to now a 10-month program. So there's a loss in those services through the summer, the YES program can actually provide services year-round. So they provide those excess services that family school wellness cannot, so it may be like the family school wellness is more that one-on-one with the child and the family as necessary. Whereas the YES program can look at programs such as support groups, after-school programs, summer programs, those kinds of things that are outside of the scope now of the family school wellness changes.
Any other questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, carried?
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. All right, RFD regarding the bylaw 1470-A71.
All right, so yes, just in follow-up of the item that we had the public hearing for earlier in the meeting. Again, by law 1470, adding those discretionary uses to the R3 district specific to the 4620 50th Avenue being the previous associated clinic site. So we are recommending that council grant second and third reading to this bylaw.
All right, someone prepared to make that motion?
I move that we give second reading to bylaw 1470-A71.
Thank you, Counselor Reberger, discussion. All in favor of the motion, carried? We don't need to do the, the, we just ask if someone would like to give this third reading?
That's a move of Your Worship, that we give third reading to bylaw 1470-A71.
Thank you, Counselor Harrison. All in favor of the motion, carried? RFD regarding Innisville Ski Hill funding request.
So yeah, back in January, administration met with the Ski Hill and we asked them to provide us with a formal funding request. And that did happen and a letter was presented to council, but we are looking for a formal motion. So we are asking that council approve the funding request to the Innisville Ski Club for $35,000 to be funded from the 2021 contingency.
All right.
And then we'll issue up a letter pending the motion.
Okay. Someone prepared to make that a motion to that effect?
I would be pleased to make that motion that we approve the funding request to the Innisville Ski Club for $35,000 to be funded from the 2021 contingency.
Okay, thank you, discussion. I think we've had a heck of a facility put together by the, our citizens at large have done an outstanding job of putting that program together, so I think the community is well in in tune with contributing to that project as, as this will.
Your Worship, just a, a question, I fully support the motion, but just a question around, in the letter, there was a, a number of things that were requested in kind. Have you given any thought to, to that, to those other, other requests? Or are we still in?
No, we are still in, in discussion with them, we have moved forward with a couple of their requests in regards to the parking lot expansion and the barricades, so we are still working forward with that and then regardless of the road closure, we're moving forward, looking on how we can make that work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Carried, thank you. Next, Director Kennedy in regard to an RFD on 37th Street reconstruction.
Yeah, so just coming to council in regards to a discussion on proceeding with the final design procurement and construction of 37th Street between 61st Ave and 58th Ave, kind of an extension of the 61st Ave project we did last year. With the majority of the capital projects under the Building Canada grant of 9.4 million. Administration is estimating we have approximately $700,000 still remaining in that grant. We would like to proceed with the final design procurement and construction of 37th Street. We would look at doing, using the same proposed road cross-section that we did for 61st Ave, which included a, a number of consultations with the business owners, which are similar to the ones along 37th Street. So we're asking, estimating the project value to be 1.1 million dollars, so the town would contribute $400,000 coming from the utility stabilization reserve. We would look at doing a special bylaw tax in the same manner as 61st Ave in order to recoup the 15% of cost of paving only over the 15-year period, same as we did for 61st Ave. With the total value per lot to be finalized after the project is awarded. Landowners would be contacted in the review, design of the review, sorry, review of the design as well as discussions on the special bylaw tax. Administration will come back to council with a summary of the test results or tender results and a recommendation for award. Anticipated schedule for this, we would look to to move forward quickly in the design procurement to come in May to July, construction August to October. Financial impacts, again, project would be funded from the 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 final dollars in the building Canada grant as well as the utility stabilization reserve. So yeah, we're just looking for council approval to proceed with this project.
All right, is someone prepared to make that motion?
I'd so move your worship that we approve the capital budget for Thirty Seventh Street reconstruction to be funded from the building Canada grant and the utility stabilization reserve.
Discussion.
I do have a question regarding the special tax. Has any of the current owners been sort of given a heads up that this is becoming down the pipe?
So we have not discussed discussed it with the current owners along Thirty Seventh Street. Approximately half of the owners along there are the same owners as sixty first, but we will be proceeding once we go through the design. Giving them an idea of what approximately this would mean in regards to a bylaw tax. And come and bring that forward back to council with their answers or their opinion of the special tax.
I guess further up to that. Is there a possibility that they wouldn't go for the special bylaw tax and then we're on the hook for paving the whole thing or the expenditures for the paving?
I guess approval of the project would still be in consideration. The council will give you our our recommendation and as well as the results from the discussions with the landowners that at that time you can decide if you want to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Council Reber.
Through to Director Kennedy, could you elaborate a bit on the improvements to the surface drainage? I'm just curious, being familiar with that area.
Yeah, so it would include some storm drainage extensions, catchments areas, putting the curb and gutter in to catch some of the areas. Now, there is a number of areas that the properties are low. So we are, we've looked at in the preliminary design to try and look at providing at least some opportunity for landowners to be able to to connect, to tell their own self surface drainage, but there is limitations on what we can do with onsite private businesses. So we will look though at trying to address and at least give them an opportunity to address their own drainage problems that they're having, which is causing a lot of the 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 problems we're having with drainage on the street right now.
That was a swamp when it was developed and it's still.
Yes, your worship, just just a quick question to Director Kennedy. Now, for some of these, I know it's some of the discussions with our our past project. What would it look like? Is there a percentage basis that, you know, if three quarters of the bill of the businesses supported and, you know, twenty five percent don't, what's, is there a percentage basis or what's a calculation for something like this to still have momentum to to move forward, even if not, it wasn't unanimous, we'll say, within a within an area?
So the bylaw that council approved is called a special tax bylaw. So versus another alternative is a local improvement tax. Local improvement tax, there is a, there's a formula I can recall to the M G A, you need a certain amount of those factory impacted to to make that that tax be implemented where a special tax bylaw is not debatable. It's up to council really, and it's reviewed annually. So the bylaw can be revoked at any time. Right now we're asking each council up to fifteen years for to to receive that funding, but it can be revoked at any will of council. What's this review? You you did approve it in twenty to the twenty twenty one. But there's no provisions in that bylaw to whether it's a hundred percent or or one percent or if all were against it, you still have that authority to to apply that bylaw.
Thank you for the clarity. Appreciate it.
Council Berkeley.
Your worship through to C E O Becker. So from your perspective, like, why would you, why do the special tax as opposed to the local improvement if, you know, we're trying to build relationships and and we want that buy in, of course. Is it just like a little bit more, I guess bureaucratic heavy, shall we say, doing doing the local improvement tax? Because don't they under that, do do they not have to agree prior to the beginning of the construction or the the improvement?
Yeah, correct. Council Berkeley, local improvement tax, that is agreement prior to advancing the project. I'd have to go back and I know there was an R F D presented to council with that information. I have to go back. I'd be giving you specifically why there's consideration to a special tax bylaw versus a local improvement. I'm not sure if, Erica, if you recall at all, but again, just for clarity, as for Steve's report, this is, is this something you don't want to consider? So to say this is going to happen is not not a hundred percent. So a lot, a lot needs to happen from detail design and costing to to discussions with the affected businesses. So through our procurement policy, council, I need to have that report back to you on if you wish to approve that project with all that information. At that time, council, we can certainly we would have to evaluate that the provisions of if you wish to collect in some of the fashion to sixty first onto these business owners. And what what tool do you use? And I think that's a good mechanism where there's a local improvement tax or a special tax.
Yeah, I think got a little kickback on the last one. So be careful, you know, it just it's all up front and everybody knows that. So but anyways, is did we make a motion? Yeah. Council, Council Harrison. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion. Carrie? All right, the next item is the R F D regarding the S R D membership and supply of services. Director Kennedy.
So we have in front of you two agreements that unfortunately weren't ever executed with the South Red Deer Regional Waste Water Commission, it was brought forward to us last week that upon review of their own records, that they did find that these were not executed to date. In brief, a couple summaries for each member. So the membership agreement, these are consistent with the approved business plan and are generally more focused on the governance component, including the appointment of directors, director conduct, budgeting, etc. It's also defined in theory how the customer town of Innesville is to provide information regarding new development changes and changes to their collective system. In regards to the supply of services agreement, this agreement is primarily focused on the extending the regionals wastewater treatment agreement to the city of Red Deer. An updated schedule is to match the city regers wastewater bylaw that was updated in two thousand and eighteen. The supply contract defines the connection point at which the inlet of the super pipe feeding into the lift station. If in the future Innesville wishes to tie in somewhere else in the north, for example, that would then require an amendment to this agreement. We have reviewed the the both of the agreements and have only found some minor revisions required within both of them. Mainly mainly just grammatical. And in regards to the services supply, we are just requesting that some clarification in regards to our operating agreement that they match. There is a bit of difference there. So we are looking for a little feedback clarification on the supply of service agreement. But other than that, we are looking to for council to approve the execution of these two agreements.
I know they've been sitting on the books. I think there's only been one agreement signed in that since the day it was initiated. So they're trying to clean up. Catch ups.
I think they had two. They call Penhold or sorry, Bowden and Olds were the only two that had actually executed.
There were two?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't think there is. Well, it's the same agreement that they signed initially and there's no no surprises in my what I went through. So is someone prepared to make a motion that we decide to belong to the South Red Deer Regional Waste Water Authority?
I would move that we follow the recommended action.
Thank you, Council Reber. Discussion. There is provision in there. I've noted for what do you call it? Mediation or arbitrations in in regards to our, you know, negotiations for property, but none of that has changed and I think it's pretty straightforward. Other than that, it's 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 been in place now and operating under these principles for what? Seven or eight years now? Anyways, did I get a motion? Council Reber. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. Correspondents.
Counsel, I just want to highlight number one, actually, it's going into next budget deliberation. I will be tagging these additional costs. This is a forecast for Adco and less revenue collected. Which would come as for the franchise fee to the town of Innesville. But there's a few things coming at us in bytes from the R C M P, the charge on that. I can't remember what it was is to do with. Help me out, but is a the testing. Yeah, biological testing. So there's a few little items that are just kind of ringing on, make sure we tag those as we go into the budget and tax for two thousand and twenty two. But here's another one that's certainly a potential hit to us as well.
Your worship through to C E O Becker, do we respond to number six?
Your worship, Council Berkeley, if there's yeah, we do it a few different ways. Whether it's received as information, if there's no direction or conversation, we just, yeah, it's received as information. But if there's deliberate conversation, we pass that back forward to the that individual that submitted into the correspondence.
Sure that the contents are quite accurate. Around the the perception of the cart. You know, we didn't put them there.
Yeah, I I agree with Council Berkeley that like some of the comments there are directly absorbed into the survey, but it is kind of implied that that we actually intentionally put the cart in there. And I think we should, someone should at least I think contact her and tell her that we didn't.
Will do.
It doesn't have to be big, but
so is it our intent to reply to Mrs. Thorson? Okay, good.
And your worship through to C E O Becker, maybe, you know, sometime at an A and P if we're looking for delegation or something, maybe we could have Holly Bilton come and do a presentation to us about Chinook's Edge. We haven't got together with the school board, of course, for a long time and always nice to hear an update from her.
Will do.
Any further discussion on the correspondence? If not, would someone like to move, we accept these for information?
I'll move that we accept this for information and I guess we did say that we would get back to Sheila. So Thorson, perhaps that could just be you, your worship. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the motion. Carrie, thank you. Quickly go around the table. Council Hill, do you mind starting?
Not a problem, your worship. Not too terribly much. I did get a call about just wanted to know whose trees they are, they're on the, as you're heading out on highway two A. There's some row of trees that back on from it's like on the top of the berm. I'm assuming that the towns, but they the gentleman was complaining that there's significant black knot within the trees. And I'm not too sure if they're the developer or if it was the town. So it was just a question. They back on from squeaky clean back. There's the empty lots that still need to be developed. But there's a, I don't know, about a dozen trees or so back there. They're pretty and affected by black knot. So just to put it on someone's radar if it isn't already.
I'm not sure we if we could for that contact information.
Most definitely. Most definitely, I can, for sure. That's all I have, your worship.
Okay. Councilor Bates.
So last week I did attend the elected officials workshop was well done. And I not as eager as Council Reber, but I did complete the emergency management management for municipal elected officials. Boy, there's a course if you want acronyms, there's there's more acronyms in there than you can shake a stick at. This week, there is a Red Deer River Municipal User Group Executive Meeting to discuss the director replacement process and Police and Safe Communities Meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Last week, I attended the Economic Development Corps Leadership Group Strategic Steps Candidates Forum. And this morning, saw the Pan Canadian Age Friendly Reference Group meeting. Thank you.
Council Reber.
So last week I attended a historical village meeting and they're trying to work through what they can do with the COVID restrictions. They could actually open the grounds, but not the buildings. So they're looking at all way in their options and trying to figure out a way forward and trying to outguess what the restrictions might be and those kinds of things. It's the first time we've met since November. And so they're trying to get some some kind of a game plan going. I also attended the council information session, which I found pretty interesting. I probably wouldn't have ran for council if I knew it was going to be that much work, all those rules. Tomorrow I have a community services meeting and there was a library meeting scheduled for Wednesday, but beans that the library is not open, that I don't think we're going to be having a meeting.
Thank you, your worship. I attended the Cape meeting for senior executives and there was a number of speakers. There was the M P for Red Deer, Selvin Lake, Blaine Hawkins, and he talked about just we should be prepared for when we start to come out of of COVID. There was a Steve Quasney. He spoke about investment opportunities in the province and investment opportunities in the province and it's a an opportunity for Inisville to to connect with with that group. I did, there was a Dan Duff that I really took something away from his presentation and it was about investment readiness. And I think we're we're sort of well on our way to that. And we've heard many times that it's the quality of community and to be ready for when the investment comes. You know, he said, there's many municipalities that run out and they they try and get the investment to come, but they don't have the lands that are ready, the housing that's ready. And so they're all set to go and they have no place for services aren't connected. So he talked quite a bit about that. So he said, if you're doing this, just make sure that, you know, everything's in place before you really go out and start to actively recruit other businesses and the quality of community. How often have we heard that? We heard that through thirteen ways. You know, it's it's all about people and where they want to live. And I'm certain that we're well on our way to that. He also spoke about business retention and expansion. And with the core group that that you've put together, I think you're well on your way to that too. So you know, what is our value proposition? What makes us unique as as the Inisville? And business grows from within your community. It always doesn't have to come from with outside. So I really took quite a bit away with or from his his presentation. The group Cape are looking for in the next upcoming elections, business reps to sit on the board. So there would be a nomination process that council would put our names, if we have any forth to to the committee and there would be a voting process. So if give that some thought. If we have some business owners or that would like to represent the town or that you think that they would be a good representation. Give it some thought and we'll we'll certainly discuss it as we get closer to elections. I also sat in on the candidate workshop and I'll tell you, it was very well put together. So administration, it was, it was great. It really gives newcomers an idea of what they're getting into. I I agree with Counsel Reber. It's just not putting your name on the ballot. There's, there's a lot of work involved and and it was a good refresher. So I think that's about all I, all I did. So I'll be quiet now. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like I've been busy, but Zoom meetings and the commissions have been pretty active in some of their discussions, but with the one thing that has been in the back of my mind, we've approved to have the or permit the Lions Club to seed some trout into Dodds Lake. And I'm hoping that we would get some sort of a documentation saying, giving part fish and wildlife's approval of the project. Does the Lions Club have? Have they done that to you?
I'm not sure. I'm not to Megan.
Yes, they have received their their approval from Alberta Environment.
Okay, good. The one thing, Megan, that I'm concerned about is the the discharge on the north end has to be screened. So there's no nothing able to leave Dodds Lake. And apparently people downstream on, if that's Waskezu Creek or whatever the devil is supposed to be on the Dodds property, they've got the they drain the dugout and there was quite a few little carp flopping around on the bottom. So they're getting out of that lake now, whether that's maybe that's where they came from. I don't know, but but anyways, I think we've got to make sure we're we're careful at that.
Yeah, we don't have any screening and I don't believe their permit had any requirements in terms of of the outlet of Dodds Lake. We just, we changed the water level at various points.
But we don't want all our seeded seeded fish swimming away on us on the creek. Anyways, that's just something to think about, but. Yeah, I thought that was an excellent meeting as well with the candidates and enlightening some thoughts if you're running for council. So I think that's it for the round table. Do we want to do a quick round the staff? Stephen, you got anything?
Sure, I just placed a little bit of information in regards to a request for some potential disc golf course around the Bulleye Lake from the Kinsman Club. So they did come to us last week in regards to some steps moving forward. They're at a place now where that what they would like to do with council permission is to go out and actually just stake the the course out as per the plan that's in front of you, just so council can have an idea of what this looks like, where the tees would be, where the baskets would be and get some feedback. Then they would then come forward to you with a proposal in two weeks' time with some feedback hopefully in regards to the layout and as well as some of their expectations of what they're they're looking for from the town. From my understanding, from the from the Kinsman, it is quite minor. They've picked routes that are already cut, so very minimal. More underbrush, a little bit of just, you know, their expectation in regards to mowing would be twice a year, so quite minor. And then I'll work with with Megan in regards to getting an agreement in place with them, a formal agreement in regards to maintenance and in my future replacement of the infrastructure. So so if council is okay with that, I'd just forward with working with the Kinsman.
Get some serious dog legs in there. I don't know if I could snap, snap hook a fear to be like a can of golf ball, but.
Your worship, I I certainly like the idea of staking it out. You know, we could take this ortho photo here and sort of get an idea of where it's at. But if you've actually got a piece of lath in the ground, you can actually see where where they do need to clear, because I do have some concerns about this area in the north here through the trees. So I would certainly support a direction to Director Kennedy to go forth with staking the preliminary or preliminary staking of the the right of way or whatever. Yep.
Oh, it's encouraging and interesting. Okay, anything else? Erica.
I just wanted to let everyone know that most of our summer staff has started today, so they're busy doing their their training and within a few days they'll probably be out. We'll see him out mowing and we're doing whatever, right? So yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Oh, thank you. Ken?
Just wanted to mention that we've been a little more proactive with the regional media, not so much local media, but we had some very good uptake last week on a couple of stories, the Ball Diamond Project and the youth skate park to Boston program. And so again, we have uptake from the regional media to share those stories to sort of wider audience. So that's a
Mr. Fuller. Nothing. Vanessa. I did, I did forget I was to mention, I'm hosting, I think maybe I told you the last meeting, the mayor's South Central Alberta Mayor's meeting is tomorrow. Vanessa's put it together very well for me and helped in a ton of ways. So looking forward to that. The big main topic will be COVID, I'm sure, with all their roundtable discussions, that'll be discussed and commence. This corridor has been hit pretty hard. I think olds went over a hundred here in the last day or two. So it's it's really getting home here. So anyways, I'll let you know what what comes of that meeting, but anyways. Mr. Becker, nothing? No? Okay, well, that's everything. We entertain a motion to go in camera?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Take a couple minutes break.